Well, question number 31. Well.
Well, question number 31.
Good evening. This is George. I have a question for somebody about which documents to look at tonight.
Hey, George. It's Tom. What's your question?
Um, Tom, hi. Um, there are several versions of the of the staff report running around. I've got a 58-page, a 48-page, and 136-page version. So I'm not sure which one we should look at so we're all on the same page, so to speak. And the other thing is I can't access a lot of the documents on the OneDrive because that SharePoint, I keep getting my virus software keeps telling me there's malware and another suspicious activity on it. So a lot of it I couldn't look at. But the main point is Doreen emailed another version of the staff report. Says revised 131. And then there's two or three other versions available online. So which one should I look at for tonight?
Yeah, Gary Pegg and Stacker will address that in his staff report.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
He'll go over what the what the changes are and what the difference.
Okay, so then we'll know.
What the other two staff reports are, but I'm sure he can address that as well. So.
Okay. I'll just hang tight, then.
Yeah.
All right, we'll start the meeting about a minute at 7:00. Hi, Dory. All right, so it's 7 o'clock, so I'll call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. This is City of Tiger Planning Commission Public Meeting. Today's January 31st, 2022. So the first thing is a roll call. Dory, may we have a roll call, please?
President who?
Here.
Vice President Jackson?
Here.
Commissioner Brant?
Here.
Commissioner Miranda?
Present.
Commissioner Quinones?
Present.
Commissioner Roberts?
I am here.
Commissioner Shook?
Here.
Commissioner K. Evans?
I'm here.
Thank you. Commissioner Watson?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dory. Thank you, everyone. Next communication. Commissioners, if you have any communication or any meeting you want to share with the planning commission since our last meeting, please raise your hand. Vice President Jackson, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to mention quickly that the city is currently soliciting feedback on term limits for mayor and city council. If you go to the Tiger website, there's a big graphic right in the center of the page that will take you to where you can input your feedback and your reading of the previous language on term limits. And I think it's an important issue that anyone on the commission or anyone watching tonight, if they have any feedback, should consider contributing.
Thank you, Vice President Jackson, for the reminder. Anybody else have anything else to share? I see none, so let's move on. We don't have minutes to consider tonight, so let's move on to the public hearing. So I would like to give a brief description of how the hearing will proceed. First, the staff will give their staff report. Then the applicant will make their presentation. After that, we will take public testimony from the phone line. And the phone line is 503-966-4101. Again, it's 503-966-4101. Following the public testimony, staff will be given time for any follow-up or response to the testimony, and the applicant is then given an opportunity to respond to all testimony. So I will open the public hearing. It's regarding River Terrace Town Center, and the case numbers are Plan Development Review, PDR 2021-4, Subdivision, SUB 2021-6, Sensitive Lands Review, SLR 2021-11, and Temporary Use Permit, TUP 2021-21-23. So the plan development provides 491 residential units with 25,716 square feet of commercial retail space. The development consists of 10 four-story apartment and mixed-use buildings and a mixture of single-detached housing. And the project will be developed in two phases. The first phase being the infrastructure and the single-detached housing portion of the site, and transfer of the future community park tract to the city. The second phase being the apartment and mixed-use development. So I have some required statements that I need to read before the hearing. The applicable review criteria are those listed on Page 2 of the staff report, available online on the city website under Public Hearing and Notices. Number 2, testimony and evidence must be directed toward the applicable review criteria listed on Page 2 of the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulation that are believed to apply to the decision. Number 3, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statement or evidence sufficient to afford a decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Here are some procedure items. Abstentions or conflicts. Commissioners, if you wish to abstain or declare a conflict interest, please click on your virtual hand right now. Commissioner Shook, please go ahead.
I do not have a, thank you, Commissioner or President Who. I do not have a conflict of interest, but I wanted to disclose that the company I work for has a business relationship, a good business relationship, with Pacific Community Design, but we're in no way involved in this project or anything about it. But I wanted to disclose that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Shook. Anybody else? All right, I see none. To the member of the public, if you wish to challenge any member of the planning commission for bias or conflict of interest, please call the number again, 503-966-4101, to do so. Okay, second item, ex parte contacts. Commissioners, if you wish to report any ex parte contacts, please click on your virtual hand. Ex parte contacts are oral or written communication about a hearing with persons other than city staff or the city attorney. I see none. Commissioners, if you have visited the side of the proposal, please click on your virtual hand. All right, please leave your hands up. So it's Commissioner Who? It's me. Commissioner, Vice President Jackson. Commissioner Miranda. Commissioner Brant. Commissioner Quinones? Sorry. Anybody else? All right, thank you so much, Commissioner. You may lower your hand now. And next item, jurisdiction. To the member of the public, if you wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this case, again, please call 503-966-4101 to do so. All right, so I would like to introduce staff member, Project Planner Gary Pegg and Stacker, for presentation of the staff report. Good evening, Gary. Please present your report.
Good evening, President Who and planning commissioners. Nice to join you this evening. First, I want to start out with the materials that had been sent last week. That they included the staff report, a preliminary plan set from the proposal, agency comments, and a zoning map. The commissioner that had a question about which was which, the largest file, I believe, 130 pager, was the staff report. And I've sent a revised staff report. I'll get into in a minute. But first, I want to account for public comments received in the last few days. We've received four public comments, emails, and one written comment. The first one I'll start off with is Nathan, Vice President Jackson's comment on Scrivener errors. Thank you very much. Those were accurate and have been addressed in the staff report, the revised staff report. You also had an outstanding question you may want to ask later that I wasn't quite able to place in the page numbers that you referenced, so you may want to ask that later for clarification regarding Condition 11 and Clean Water Services requirements. Also, Justin Sardon wrote a comment. The neighborhood is going to have increased traffic and keeping pedestrians safe is a major concern. Bridget Motisori also, what is planned relative to traffic mitigation on River Terrace Boulevard? Marie Walkiewitz was concerned about wetland impacts mitigation, stormwater management, and transportation connections. All very thoughtful, positive comments, but not in opposition. The revised staff report I sent this evening is in track changes, and it accounts for agency conditions that came late through negotiation, and also an agreement with the applicant on the timing on which conditions would be required. So it's conditions, in terms of the timing, those are planning conditions, and they are conditions 7 through 10 in the staff report. It has to do with the Phase 2 development proposal for the commercial part of the development, and those conditions related to Phase 2, not the single-family detached and rowhouse development. That must taste good. The agency information that I sent also with the revised staff report were from two agencies. Clean Water Services added two conditions. Those are 30 and 31 in the revised staff report, requiring district annexation prior to development. That is, the Clean Water Services District for Storm and Sanitary needs to have its own annexation process, and conveyance design requirements was the other condition Clean Water Services required of this development. And that was essentially to account for the upstream drainage related to the sewer treatment plant, which is over on the West River Terrace development. So that was to be a temporary pump, and it's a gravity-fed system by design, and this condition was to accomplish and ensure that that conveyance would occur. Also, the county had a couple of conditions as well relating to, in this case, it's Condition 14, I think, relating to the River Terrace, sorry, Roy Rogers Road sidewalks, and how that is accommodated with the adjacent 10-foot landscape strip that follows the project along its frontage of Roy Rogers Road. So that's what the revised staff report and amended conditions relate to. Now I'd like to switch, at this point, to a PowerPoint to briefly introduce the project before the applicant has a chance to go into a deeper dive. So bear with me a minute. All right, everybody can see this, okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, here we go. The River Terrace Town Center Plan Development Proposal. This slide, the arrow points to the location within the River Terrace District, the white square there, the missing piece, as it were, between Washington County, unincorporated Washington County on the east and River Roy Rogers Road on the west, and what was known as, and some of you may have been sitting in on the earlier developments to the north, the River Terrace East developments, and one of the first ones, the one to the south, which I presented to the planning commission, Rochack Ridge, a number of years ago. Project summary was pretty much covered by President Who, and so there's nothing new in this slide. I won't bother going through them, except that perhaps the last two bullets, 4.8 acres of trails and parks, and 3.4 acres of stream corridor and wetlands constitute a little more than eight acres of open space in the project. This is the concept plan, which, if I think if the standards are still correct, you will be making your first vote regarding concept plan approval, followed by detailed plan approval. This concept plan shows, again, the existing development to the east, to the right of the screen, and the new River Terrace development on the other side of Roy Rogers Road to the west. And north is the open space and sensitive area tracks of the adjoining property, but also some of those features on the subject property, which is denoted by the black square, the 40-acre parcel. So within this, the concept has lower-density development adjacent to existing development to the east, and increasing in density as you go towards the west, with single-family detached development in the orange and the yellow, and the red being rowhouse development, adjacent to River Terrace Boulevard, which is the central collector north-south. And then east-west is Jean-Louis Road, or Jean-Louis, if you like. And then east Phase 2 development is west of River Terrace Boulevard, this being Phase 1, this being Phase 2. And of the 10 buildings represented there, six of them are mixed-use, which have three stories of apartments above the ground floor of commercial. And that's, these six here have mixed use. The residential-only buildings are the four on the south portion, the two that are adjacent to River Terrace Boulevard. This concept map is good in that it shows the connectivity, pedestrian connectivity in blue throughout the site, from the sidewalk adjacent to Roy Rogers Road to a path within open space along the southern area border of the project, the River Terrace Boulevard itself, and the trail which connects the property to the north and property to the south, which already have these features through the site, the sidewalks, of course, on all the streets, both sides, and a connection through mid-block, these blocks being larger than standard or broken for pedestrian use in a public pedestrian easement through them. But also, on this concept, you'll see that this central spine of pedestrian accessibility here is called Market Street in the concept, and it is a highly refined pedestrian.
You gotta download an app to open it.
So in Plan Development Review, of course, it's designed to be flexible in standards and to get a public benefit in exchange for that. So these next two slides relate to that. The flexibility requests included the screening of the apartments to the south that we reviewed a minute ago, from the R12 zone, which is south of that. So as you know, there is a water quality facility between the R12 zone and the apartments, providing significant screening and distance, so that their request was not to have to build a fence, which is required under the screening standards. That seems to be a very reasonable request. The setbacks of waste service areas is reduced from 20 feet to. 15, I think, for in two locations along Roy Rogers Road. Again, this is done to accommodate the pedestrian flow on the site and the applicant can explain that in more detail if you have questions. The driveways within the influence area of Jean Louise. Jean Louise is a collector, therefore the standard applies, 150 lineal feet is required to be unless it can't be accommodated. And in this case, because of the sensitive areas, both north and south, the traffic is likely to be less enough to avoid queuing that would make this a problem to reduce the standard, also a reasonable request. Access for residential use is reduced. When you have apartments exceeding, I think, 100, you need to have two accesses. In this case, there's just access from Jean Louise Road on the north. The accesses across the River Terrace Boulevard are discouraged. There's wetland facilities on the south and Roy Rogers Road has a has a street spacing standard of 600 feet. So it was impractical to have a second access to this phase two site, the residence, the mixed use commercial site. However, an emergency access is provided at the south end and is approvable for that reason, but did not meet the two standard, the two access standards. A reasonable request. And finally, the setbacks in dimensional standards, those are quite numerous. They pertain principally to the phase one development of single family detached and row houses, side yard setbacks, and I think front yard setbacks as well. But this is a typical use of the flexibility of standards to achieve a denser development. The public benefits that are proposed by the applicant include mixed use development. This is highly valuable and to create an urban feel, a dense development that is pedestrian oriented. Mixed use development, you know, creates much richer environment. And we find that that is a valuable benefit. It's not required otherwise by the code. The plazas and open space also, as shown in the blue areas in the concept map are significant, significantly extend the feel of open space adjacent to River Terrace Boulevard, where four large open spaces adjacent to the apartment houses, apartment buildings are nestled there and adjacent to give a more expansive feel to an extension of that linear park. And pedestrian connections, we we I mentioned earlier in the concept plan are significant throughout the commercial zoned areas. And the dedication of 8.2 acres of open space, which is comprised of sensitive areas and open space that's suitable for park development. So that's extended my presentation. Of course, the staff is recommending, as you note in the staff report, to approve both the concept plan and the detailed plan. So at this point, I want to conclude my presentation and I think maybe questions now would be fine, or it's up to President Hu whether you want to allow that or proceed to the developers' presentation. Let me stop sharing here.
Thank you, Gary. I think we'll try to ask some questions right now, if you don't mind. Tom, would you like to say something before?
Yes. Thank you, President Hu. And for the those who don't know who I am, I'm Tom McGuire, and the Assistant Community Development Director and the liaison to the Planning Commission. I wanted to let you know that there were some technical difficulties with the stream, the web stream tonight, and it it's up and running now. It's fine, but I think the initial part of the hearing was cut off from the web stream. So I think legally, it might be good before you start public testimony to read through those sections of the script having to do with public testimony, just so we make sure that everyone who is on the web stream tonight or may want to call in and testify has all that information. So.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Would you like me to read all the the required statement as well, or just just a statement regarding public?
It wouldn't hurt, given that I think the beginning of the meeting was was not being publicly broadcast, probably would be good legally to repeat that.
Okay, I will do that.
I don't know if you want to, yeah, if you want to do questions first and then applicant, or if you just want to read that now and proceed.
Okay, I will read that. Thank you. So as Tom mentioned, I I already read the required statement for the hearing, but due to technical difficulties, I will read again so there will be no ambiguity. So the required statements are as follows. The applicable review criteria are those listed on page two of the staff report available online on the city website under the Public Hearing and Notices section. And number two, testimony and evidence must be directed toward the applicable review criteria listed on page two of the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulations that are believed to apply to the decision. And number three, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeals to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. And there are a couple of questions for the public as well. To the member, to the member of the public, if you wish to challenge any member of the Planning Commission for bias or conflict interest, please call the public testimony line 503-966-4101 to do so. And I believe Eric will be able to take your call. And another question is to the member, to the member of the public, if you wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission to hear this case, again, please call 503-966-4101. And later on, after the applicant's presentation, we'll be taking public testimony. And the number again is 503-966-4101. Hopefully, that's good enough. All right, so commissioners, by the way, thank, thank you, Gary, for your presentation. And commissioners, if you have any question you want to ask staff right now instead of the applicants, please raise your virtual hand. Commissioner Jackson, I believe Gary said that he would like you to ask a question that he was not clear about. Would you like to ask him?
Sure, I think I figured it out, but I can go ahead and ask it. I was just curious because toward the end of the staff report, like just the last couple of pages, it calls out some, I think, federal permitting requirements and some specific requirements of CWS regarding wetland mitigation, bank credits and so forth. And and sometimes those seem to be explicitly mentioned in the conditions of approval, if I'm remembering correctly. And I just wanted to make sure that they are covered by condition 11, which just kind of generally refers to, you know, federal and state law and other requirements.
Well, okay, so the Clean Water Services is is requirements are handled. Is this for the, this is for the natural resources, right?
Natural resources and I forget what
Yeah, it's, it's usually handled in the service provider letter issued to the applicant. What impacts there are to vegetated corridor and wetlands and how they are being mitigated, including bank credits or revegetation, that kind of thing. So they're not so much enumerated in the in the conditions as they are the condition in compliance with Clean Water Services standards. And then those are further available in the Clean Water Services Service Provider Letter for natural resources and stormwater connection in their comment letters. So those conditions are by reference.
Okay, thank you.
This is Tom again. I'm popping in because what might help is I believe the issue, the the wetlands that have to do with Clean Water Services and core issues are ones that are not regulated by City of Tiger. All of the City of Tiger significant wetland sensitive lands, they are staying out of those areas and the buffers. And so we have no City of Tiger wetland issues that were regulating or having to deal with or that we would put conditions on. So I think the staff report is referring to permitting and regulatory actions that are between the applicant and CWS and the core DSL. But it would probably good be good for the applicant in their presentation or at the end of their presentation to confirm that for us.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for the edits that you caught. Appreciate that.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Brandt, please go ahead with your questions.
Good evening. Quick question while we're on the Clean Water Services. I didn't see or didn't understand if there was any bio swells for treating surface runoff water. So that's, I guess that's kind of germane to this point.
Go ahead, Jeremy. I think our principal development review engineer is here to answer more specific utility and street questions. Thank you, Jeremy.
Good evening, commissioners. Again, Principal Engineer Jeremy Tamargo. So the applicant did submit a preliminary drainage report in accordance with our CWS standards as well as the River Terrace Development Standards. So there's two primary areas where the stormwater will be managed for the site. To the north of the site, there is a combined water quality and detention facility as well as one to the south of the site. So this area was planned with regional detention facilities. So they're tapping into the capacity of the facility in the north as well as expanding the facility located to the south of the proposed development to meet those Clean Water Services standards as well as the more stringent River Terrace Development Standards.
Thank you very much. That answers my question. I appreciate it.
You're most welcome.
Thank you. Any more questions this time, commissioners? I have one question either for Gary or Jeremy regarding the now approval condition number 41 regarding the fee in lieu, because they are not going to connect Jean Louis with Rochack. So I'm just curious, in practical terms, how would that dollar amount be configured and how would that money be used just in general terms? Because we have encountered fee in lieu for trees and wetland before, and this is, I believe this is the first time in my seven year on planning commission, fee in lieu for this street connection. So if you don't mind explaining just a little bit how that will work, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, Gary, you want me to take this one as well?
Yeah, we we talked about it, so I'm happy for you to do that. Appreciate it.
Sure. So just to clarify, so there will be a connection. So there will be a full street connection between Jean Louis and the existing Lorenzo Lane there. So the fee in lieu is specifically for there is an identified capital project that will expand the existing Lorenzo Lane to provide a full collector section through connecting to Rochack. So basically expanding what that street cross section will be. At this time, though, there are right away constraints as well as land acquisition that would need to happen prior to that expansion project occurring. And and so at this time, the development is not responsible for that expanded widening off-site from their property. And so that is where the proportional share analysis is coming in and the fee in lieu. So the applicant essentially did a calculation of their impact on that future connection compared to the overall impact and use of what that connection would look like. So the fee in lieu is being set aside basically as as a pot of money to be used later, right? So whenever that capital improvement project commences and goes forth to build that expanded connection, that money will be available for that future improvement.
Got it. So while I was driving around there, I noticed around that area, there are some, at least in my opinion, missing stop signs. So once the project complete, would would that fee be used to install additional stop signs or is that just a total different pot of money altogether?
So a couple of things, so that that area to the east of the proposed development is actually Washington County jurisdiction. So it's not currently within the City of Tiger. So I'm not sure if, you know, a future project that would, you know, provide that expanded connection there would include any other traffic mitigation measures or stop signs. So I'm not really sure at this time, the full extent of what a project would look like.
Fair enough. All right, thank you, Jeremy. Commissioners, do commissioners, do you have any more questions for the staff at this time? All right, I see none, so let's move on to the applicants. Let me see. At this time, I asked the applicant to present your case. Please state your name and title. Address is not necessary. And please limit your presentation to 20 minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. Stacy Connery with Pacific Community Design. Is it okay if I go ahead and share our PowerPoint?
Please go ahead.
Can everyone see the presentation?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'll try not to spend too much time like duplicating Gary's presentation, which I appreciate Gary's thorough staff report preceding this. And I will jump right in and walk us through the first few slides and then I will hand things over to Pam Verdadero, who is with Stanton Street Building Company, and she'll finish out part of the presentation. But we'll begin with an aerial photograph that is outlining the project site in yellow. And we wanted to start with this aerial photograph to basically illustrate the significance of the development that has already occurred around the site and to highlight the fact that this project is going to be completing an important collector road connection of River Terrace Boulevard. It will connect these two points that have been built to the north and south of our site, providing full connection from Shoals Ferry Road through to Bull Mountain Road. And south of Bull Mountain Road is the South River Terrace Project, which is under construction, which will ultimately connect River Terrace Boulevard to the future school site that is south of in the southern portion of River Terrace Community Plan. The project will also connect Jean Louise Road through the site to Lorenzo and provide community parks in the northern portion where you see a, there's a creek corridor that's currently going diagonally through this area. And we'll next step into the River Terrace Community Plans to highlight how some of the important components in this plan are being implemented in this project. And as alluded to with the aerial photograph, River Terrace Boulevard is an important collector connection, which has a trail corridor associated with the road and that will be built east-west through the site. Sorry, north to south through the site, east-west through the site, Jean Louise Boulevard will be constructed to connect Lorenzo Road on the east side of the property. There are two local There are two local street connections that are planned on the eastern boundary of the site with Tuscany and Lorenzo. The site has been planned for a community park in the northeastern portion of the site, which this project will dedicate land on both sides of River Terrace Boulevard for future development of a community park. There are some wetland and riparian areas that exist on the site. The blue portion that you see here is the manmade irrigation pond that was constructed to irrigate the blueberry farm that existed on the property. And as you may have noticed on the aerial photograph, that pond is right in the path of connection of River Terrace Boulevard. So it, it will be impacted for the infrastructure construction associated with the project. However, the stream corridor that runs diagonally through the site and has associated riparian and vegetated corridor areas is being protected within the community park areas. There is a significant tree growth that is offsite to the north of the project in this hatched area. So it is just up here. And that area is also part of an open space tract on the project to the north and will not be impacted by this project. And let me see if I can move this. There are neighborhood parks that are identified as part of the community plan also. And none are identified on this site since the community park has been identified for this site. But there are neighborhood parks to the north, to the south, and to the northwest of the site, all of which are accessible through the trail corridor along River Terrace Boulevard. And there will be trail connections provided through the community park to connect with the pedestrian underpass under Roy Rogers Road. Okay, this slide is showing some more details of our site plan, but also includes the zoning districts map from the community plan to help illustrate the fact that the site contains four different zoning districts on, on the property. Community, commercial, and three different residential zones of R7, R4.5, and R25. So there's a variety of uses and densities that are allowed with these zones. And as Gary described, the plan development process allows us to blend those uses and densities across the site to come up with a development pattern that fits this particular property, given the topographic constraints and surrounding uses and all the things that the community plan calls for to be implemented on this, this project. And as Gary described, we have single-family uses on the eastern portion of the property, including row homes and rear-loaded, single-family homes and front-loaded homes right along the eastern edge of the property. The eastern portion of the property includes the multifamily mixed-use development to create a town center feel along Jean Louise and along the Market Street, which will run north-south through, through the town center area. The green buildings are mixed-use buildings with commercial on the ground floor. Each one of these buildings will have 4,286 square feet of commercial on the ground floor, plus 36 multifamily units on the upper floors. Three of these buildings will have 34 units each that are entirely residential, facing River Terrace Boulevard here and the two buildings on the south portion here. This building will have 30 residential units. It is slightly different than the other buildings in order to accommodate a grade change that occurs in that area. And we are providing a pedestrian and bicycle connection through these blocks here, mainly because there are topographic constraints that limit us from being able to provide a vehicular street connection from Tuscany all the way to River Terrace Boulevard. So in lieu of that, we are providing a bicycle and pedestrian connection. As Gary mentioned, there is a trail corridor that will be enhanced along the southern boundary of the site with trails along the edge of a natural area with some overlook areas. The multifamily units will have access to a swim center and gym in the northern portion of the town center area and an outdoor children's play area and seating area in the southern portion of the site. And this is the location where a future pedestrian connection will be provided to connect to the pedestrian underpass. And at this, Pam Verdadero can join. She was, she'll take us through the rest of the presentation and I'll just page us forward.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Stacy. So I wanted to spend some time talking through some of the town center amenities. We have essentially created an internal main street through the center of the neighborhood to create areas in which folks can walk down straight to the plaza area and connect to the north, to the community park. Also, what you'll see is a number of access points to trail corridors, wider sidewalks through the plaza areas, which we'll deem as open space areas and gathering areas for folks visiting the town center. There's also a number of off-street parking spaces to accommodate folks that will be driving to the center. Also bicycle parking, as you can see, at certain points within the retail space. And also pictured and pointed out is the River Terrace Trail Corridor along River Terrace Boulevard. Our vision is to basically add some courtyard areas for open dining areas. We kind of envisioned this to be more of a service center as far as services and restaurants, fast and kind of sit-down dining for folks in the neighborhood. Next slide.
Trying.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Pam. Would you stay your title for the record, please?
Oh, sure. So I represent the builder Stan Street Building Company, and I'm the Senior Vice President.
Thank you.
The first perspective slide here is a view of kind of the, the north view of the pedestrian crossing into the center from Jean Louise. This kind of shows a, kind of a visual of what we expect the center to look like, wider sidewalks, kind of some background folks seating areas for restaurants, dining and whatnot. Next perspective. This is on the opposite corner, again, showing wider sidewalks, outdoors dining areas, and basically, again, just activating these corners with where folks can gather, take walks on their lunch break, hopefully, grab a bite to eat, and again, connect to the park area. And this is a third perspective that was prepared for us, just showing another view from kind of onset Jean Louise into the neighborhood, into the entrance of their markets, future market street. Next slide. Some mixed-use buildings. And we have various architectural styles ranging from more traditional and French, and then also a little bit more of a modern design. A lot of these have kind of a brick facade. You'll see some nice awnings over the retail space, along with entryways that are called out. Just adding different buildings to accentuate Pacific Northwest and just, you know, add a little bit of variety into the community. The reverse side of these buildings do offer parking garage with tandem parking in the rear elevation of each building. Want to make sure to point that out in addition to the other parking that's in the mixed-use center. Next slide. So buildings will be, again, as mentioned, 30 to 34 units in apartment buildings, 36 in the mixed-use buildings. You can go ahead and, oh, well, she probably mentioned that the apartment sizes range from 600 square feet up to about 1,164 square feet. And those are going to be more like a junior one-bedroom footprint up to a large two-bedroom, two-bath footprint. Those buildings are also going to be elevator served for those folks that are interested. Next slide. The row homes, we have a couple of elevations shown here, more of a modern farmhouse style and a contemporary French style. The parking for these buildings will be in the rear, one and two-car garages, two cars on the end units and one car on the interior units. And these buildings will consist of four to six units per building, about 1,300 square feet to 1,800 square feet. So some of these are newer floor plans for the development itself, three bedrooms with office, which will be kind of a nice a work-from-home option. So, next slide. This is a depiction of some of the single-family detached homes. The small alleyway and tuck-under, those are all the alleyway product. Just a little bit of variety between the the rear load and kind of that tuck-under with, with the second floor porch. So more of a French, a modern farmhouse, and then a more traditional as we get into the medium and the large home sites. There are very, very few of those. I think there's a count of 17 along the perimeter on the east side of the neighborhood. Next slide. This is kind of, we just put this together to give you a little bit more of a visual of what we expect as far as the livability of the neighborhood. Shops, restaurant services. We have an apartment community with a swim center and workout facility within that center there. And with that, we'll conclude our presentation and open it up to any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Stacy and Pam. Commissioners, do you have any question for the applicant? Please raise your hand. Commissioner Brand, please go ahead.
Hello. Thank you so much for your presentations. Very interesting. Today I did go and walk around the site and the berferies, kind of got oriented myself to what's going on there. So thank you for this presentation. Reading through the lots, lots of documents in the application, I did not see anything about battery electric vehicle and charging infrastructure. And I didn't see anything about solar panels. So my two-part question, one, were either of those considered? And two, will the homeowner, the HOAs prohibit people from putting solar panel or installing electric charge stations on the outside of their, of their row houses or townhouses if they don't have enough room in their garage?
That's a great question. We have actually at another center in Central Beaverton added the infrastructure to include a future installation of charging stations for electric vehicles and will allow a retrofit if need be to the for sale product. So most of those can be accommodated just by upgrading the electrical outlet in the garage space. And so that's something that, although very premature, that's something we would certainly look into to accommodate where things are going as far as vehicles and gasless vehicles. So very good questions and thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you. Commissioner Kinones, please.
Well, you know what? I should probably answer his second question regarding solar panels. I don't believe we have made a determination about whether or not we would, as a builder, offer solar panels, but I don't believe the HOA would preclude the installation of solar panels, if that answers your question.
Thank you. Commissioner Kinones, please go ahead.
Yes. Thank you for this lovely presentation. I'm getting, ever since we were voting on this a couple, I think it was like a year and a half ago, I've been really excited to see this. So, but my question is for the main intersection for Southwest Terrace Boulevard and Jean Louise Road. And, you know, the, the renderings were lovely, but I wanted to ask about, like, do you foresee traffic looking at lights there? Or is there room to consider maybe a roundabout to keep a slower traffic pattern through there, since that is going to be very walkable and it looks like there's going to be a lot of pedestrian traffic? So I think I was mainly more concerned about that traffic pattern and what you've considered for traffic signals and/or a roundabout.
I think they're conversing there, just to come up with a response for you. I will say that there is parking on both sides of the street. And we, I want to say the speed limit there is 25 miles an hour. But as far as a roundabout, there, I don't believe there's space for a roundabout. But as far as the crosswalk area there, it will be called out. It's a, with a different material from a typical street. Stacy, did you want to add anything to that?
Yes. Sorry, I was just conferring with our engineer here. So the intersection of River Terrace Boulevard and Jean Louise, I understand that there will be stop signs at Jean Louise. River Terrace Boulevard, however, will be through traffic. There are enhanced pedestrian amenities because of the trail corridor, things that help signal that there's pedestrians in the area in terms of how the intersections are treated where the pedestrians cross. We did very early on evaluate putting a roundabout at this intersection, but because of the topography that exists there, it was, it was prohibitive to do that and still achieve a town center type of development on the project. So we have been working with Kittleson Engineers, who are the traffic engineers on the project, to design an intersection and a street system here that they believe will be safe to accommodate the traffic that's anticipated for the area.
Great, thank you. Oh, and I do want to say thank you for considering the parking garages. I know that that was a big concern for a lot of people, so thank you for doing that, too.
Thank you. Commissioner K. Seven, please go ahead.
Yes. Yeah, thank you for your wonderful presentation and all the details and all the detailed documents also. That was very helpful. Along the lines of parking, right? This is, it's good, good. I'm glad to see mixed living kind of setup here. So hopefully some good dining and other recreational facilities will pop up there. So given that some of us who don't live in this area, but in the vicinity, have you considered some of us going there and parking? And the number of parking spaces is enough to accommodate all of us showing up weekends for, for a happy hour or whatever it might be?
We have. Let's see, the parking for the town center area has been, has been planned in consideration of the residential uses that will exist there, as well as the commercial uses that will exist. And so that means making considerations for both the employees and the patrons of these areas. And we are actually exceeding parking requirements for the mixed-use development by, let's see, we have 83 more parking spaces than what is required overall for the mixed-use area. We do anticipate a fair amount of pedestrian traffic coming to the area from the surrounding neighborhoods, as well as people driving. So we've tried to provide as efficient and safe of pedestrian access to this area as well so that people feel comfortable walking and biking to the so that people feel comfortable walking and biking to the area. But there, we have planned for parking in excess of what would normally be required.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Miranda, please go ahead.
Thank you so much. I too appreciate the presentation and kind of wanted to circle back to or jump on to K. Seven's question about the parking regarding retail on those apartment buildings. The retail's facing the street front. Will there be access from that parking area to the street front? Or will they have to walk around? I mean, it sounds like there was garages in the back of the retail spaces. And then my second question really has to do with bicycles and specifically the pedestrian bike path that is in lieu of making Tuscany a through-street. I see that it crosses through alleyways. And I understand that the pathways would be of a different material, but what kind of safety items will be in place for specifically bicycle safety, since it's on a slope? There's definitely going to be some speed in that corridor. And then my third question really had to do with bicycle storage. You know, it's a pretty large threshold for bicycle storage. And I saw that you had some, one little point on a map for bike storage and just kind of wanted to see where else you would have it for each building. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, I'll start with the mixed-use buildings and the rear parking that is provided. There are, the rear elevations of these buildings will have garages on the ground level that are for multifamily residents that live in that building. Those garages will also have tandem parking. And they're basically at the rear of the building, so they're part of the off-street parking area that is provided for the town center area. And we have provided some pedestrian connections from these parking areas going to the front of the building. And the front of the commercial buildings along the Market Street area will also have accommodations for parking on this Main Street area. Jean-Louis, though, will just have parking in the eastern portion of Jean-Louis and there's access into the parking areas from Market Street. And in terms of this pet bike corridor that runs through these two blocks, this is something that we quite frequently do within our projects. And it frequently is an occurrence where they do cross an alleyway. The travel within the alleys tends to be lower volumes because it is just the people that live there or someone is visiting and parking in a driveway. There's adequate clearance and we do look at the vision clearance triangles in those locations to be sure that there's adequate vision for bicyclists coming in and out of those locations. I'm not sure if we have ever signed them to notify people that they're approaching a pet bike path, but that is certainly something we could add to. Oh, we also stripe those areas so that it's a signal to the drivers that they're approaching something like that. And in terms of the bicycle parking, I was pointing to the outside, like bicycle racks that will be in front of the commercial areas. But there will also be bike racks placed in convenient locations within the parking areas, not just the front of the build, of the commercial buildings because there will be some bike parking for apartment users. In addition to the exterior bicycle parking, there will be interior bicycle parking as well in terms of like provision for bicycle parking within the garages that will be at the back of buildings as well as some bicycle parking and storage spaces that are on the ground floors of the buildings.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Watson, please go ahead.
Hello. I too appreciate the presentation and the inclusion of multi-use buildings as well as missing middle-type housing types mixed together. One question I have is in regards to the mixed-use buildings. Are any of them set up to accommodate? Or have, has there been consideration given to accommodating a grocery store of some sort in this, in this complex? I'm not super familiar with the area, but Google mapping it, it seems like the nearest grocery store is like eight, ten minutes away by car, Safeway. And it seems like, you know, there's going to be a sizable population of people residing, you know, new residents in this area. And that would be conducive to, you know, keeping everybody out of their cars unless, you know, completely necessary.
I can take this, Stacy. I wanted to just share with each commercial building having just over forty-two hundred square feet, the intent with devising additional spaces and just overall ability to accommodate a grocery store. We deviated from that just because the studies over the last ten years from outside consultants demonstrated, even with the population growth, that there's a significant amount of grocery stores in the area. I'm not sure if you're aware of the town center at Progress Ridge, but that certainly has a new seasons there. And just up, just slightly from that center is Albertson's. There's also Whole Foods and like you mentioned, a Safeway. And then just up from that, the Walmart Neighborhood Store. And so as far as having maybe a smaller market, if we're approached for a smaller market, that might be a possibility, but this time not a larger box grocery store.
Okay, well, it sounds like you've considered it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vice President Jackson, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. My questions are also related to the mixed-use buildings. In the, as far as I could remember in the application materials, the main justification for not making the four apartment-only buildings have mixed-use spaces was in order to support the retail spaces in other buildings. Can you talk a little bit more about why those other four buildings don't have mixed-use ground floors? I'm mostly thinking about the two buildings to the southwest.
Stacy, can you answer that question?
I can try. It's partly connected to the market studies that have been done, which have identified the amount of commercial space that this location could support, which, as I understand it, like, we're very close to that threshold with this twenty-five thousand square foot as to what's been identified for this particular location. Going higher than that, per the market studies, would not be supportive of the commercial. There is also a connection between trying to have enough residents there to support the vibrancy and interactiveness of the neighborhood and to support the businesses. So it's, it's one of those, those things that's kind of, like, you try to find the perfect balance point between the appropriate amount of commercial space and the right number of residents. And this is hitting what the studies have shown should be achieved here.
Thank you. I thought I'd also add that it would increase the shared parking area, which would then impact the site as well.
Okay, thank you very much. My other question is sort of tangentially related. I was, I know that the swim center has a multipurpose room. I was curious if there's any other anticipated interior or at least covered meeting spaces that wouldn't be strictly retail?
There is not. So the swim center and that community room are strictly for the apartment community. Any other area or meeting area would be maybe determined if it's a future need within the park area, but nothing formalized.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Brand, you have more questions? Please go ahead.
Thank you, yeah. A couple of questions here. First question is, made a quick answer. These radiuses for turning into the neighborhood, would these accommodate future TriMet bus service in order for full-size buses to be able to come into the community and make right and left-hand turns? And then the other question is, I noticed there's a significant amount of impervious surface proposed for parking lots and et cetera. Any consideration using semi-pervious or pervious paving solutions for the parking lots instead of asphalt and concrete?
Okay. Okay. What I'm hearing is that the collector roads coming into the neighborhood may very well be designed to accommodate buses. They are designed to accommodate fire trucks. We have not specifically looked at it in terms of TriMet buses because currently they're, they're not servicing this area. But it is pretty typical that collector roadway systems and arterial roadway systems can accommodate buses coming in into these areas. The pavement, that will be a question for the developer as they get into building out the project. Currently, it is not something that we're evaluating. It does tend to be a very expensive component, not only to install, but to maintain. And currently not proposed for the project.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Tom, do you have a comment you want to make?
Maybe a question for the commission or particularly Commissioner Miranda. I do have, the one advantage to us all joining remotely is I have access to all my computer gadgetry. So if I could show an example of one of those pedestrian crossings through a block with the alleys in relation to the development to the south, it's the one that's the most similar. So if you'd like to see a visual of what that actually looks like, I can pop that up on the screen. Or if you've seen enough or heard enough on that, then we can move forward.
I'm good. I don't need to see it.
Okay.
Any more questions, Commissioner? I have one question, Stacy. I don't know if you mind popping up the town center area map again. I don't know if you have one with number with the buildings.
Stacy is...
That one doesn't have the numbering, but it's fine. So my question concerned the, not the number of mixed-use buildings, but the placement of them and traffic flow. So I apologize if you already talked about it already. Maybe it's the elevation restraint, but I'm just wondering why the two buildings next to River Terrace Boulevard are not mixed-use? Because I'm not planning, but I would think that you would want retail stores to be exposed to the big streets, right? So people can see the, see the stores rather than hiding them in building one and two, which is the one on the north, the one on north, one and two. So I'm just, so I'm just wondering why seven and eight, which is the one next to River Terrace, the two that are not mixed-use, but rather the mixed-use are hiding inside the town center in the north? And I was just wondering if you just switch them around? If you put one and two as residential and seven and eight as mixed-use, would that improve, have you studied the traffic flow? Would that improve the traffic at all? Yeah, that's seven.
Well, there are a couple of factors influencing their location. To address the two buildings that are facing onto River Terrace Boulevard, there is a bit of a grade change in those locations. And it's much more extreme on the south side of Jean-Louis Boulevard where the building is having to be designed specifically to accommodate that change in topography. Within this location where buildings one and two are located, it is much flatter, which is something that's desirable for the commercial, commercial, ground-floor commercial uses. It facilitates a better storefrontage and being able to have restaurants with outdoor seating in those locations. And it's also achieving something that is a design intent to have the commercial uses on both sides of this corridor leading into a kind of like a formal plaza and entry area into the community park here. And with this location, we're able to achieve that by having those buildings on both sides and commercial activity on the ground floor. So there, there should be a lot of activity that kind of draws people into the community park.
Okay, so number, building number nine and 10 will have the same grading problem? Or just because you don't need that many retail store anymore? So nine and 10s are strictly residential, so?
Correct. It's basically because of the commercial square footage threshold and that balance point between residential units and commercial.
Got it. Thank you for the clarification. Commissioners, do you have any more questions for the applicant at this time? I see none, so thank you, Stacy and Pam. And we'll take public testimony and you will have an opportunity to respond to them. All right. So it's time for the public testimony. Again, the calling number for public testimony is five zero three nine six six four one zero one, five zero three nine six six four one zero one. Good evening, Eric. Do we have any callers?
We do not have any callers at this time.
Oh, okay, that's simple enough. All right, so commissioners, last chance to ask questions. So either staff or applicant before we go into deliberation. If you have questions, please raise your hand. Commissioner Kinones, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to see if, because we had technical difficulties at the beginning and, you know, nobody's on the call for, you know, from the community, that are we able to take delayed testimony in the event like somebody continue to have complications to access the call?
How much time would you propose we wait?
We're not waiting. I just like if anybody else wrote in after the fact or something and...
No, we will not be able to consider those.
Okay, no worries. Thank you.
Sure. Any more questions? All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing and it's time for deliberation, commissioners. So what are your thoughts? Do you like it? You don't like it? Do you vote? Do you want to vote in favor, oppose? Any more conditions? Any more questions for each other? Commissioner Roberts?
Yeah, I like it. It's just, I thought it's incredibly well thought out. And...
I, it's just, I thought it's incredibly well thought out and I'm in favor, basically. I'm amazed at how well thought out it is and the, the feeling, you know, while looking at the perspective drawings and so on, you know, it has a feeling of comfort and spaciousness, which I think is going to be really important. The way they've layered the different types of buildings, you know, not just separation, but just the whole structure, just it seems so balanced, I guess. So I'm up for it, thank you. And yes, I'm, I'm not surprised. I remember Pam came to us back when she was with Polygon several years ago. So a lot of all surprise, great job.
Thank you for sharing. Tom?
Yeah, I understand right as you were closing the hearing, we got a call.
Okay, that, that's fine. So commissioners, if you have any problem allowing me, allowing the public testimony?
No problem. No problem.
Okay, all right.
Go for it.
All right, so let me read the statements. So speaker will be timed and limited to three minutes. Your time will begin after you clearly state your name and address. Please also state if you are in favor, in opposition, or neutral to the applications. So Eric, would you please let the caller patch in, please?
Caller should be on the line.
Thank you. Hello caller. I think the phone lines are mute.
Oh geez, some, yeah. Someone must have muted it, stand by.
Thank you.
Excuse me, President who?
Go ahead.
This is Gary, and I have, my, my email address is tied to the application, and I've gotten an email question from Tim Montessori. I can share that with the group. He's referencing, he's referencing his, his written comment in an email that I referenced earlier. Now, I need to find that and pull it up. Just a minute.
Do you mind if I let Eric pass through the caller first?
Yes, by all means.
Yeah, yeah, I gotta unmute the phone call, the phone line, it takes a second to do that.
Okay. So Gary, are you ready to go right now?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's, let's go with you first, Gary, and then we'll go to the caller, so please go ahead, Gary.
Okay, so Tim Montessori writes just now, "Why wasn't our written question asked and answered?" And the written question that I had received and referenced earlier, I'll read it in its entirety, its brief. "My husband and I live in River Terrace and plan to attend the meeting tonight. When we were originally made aware of the proposed development, we were told that the traffic would be accessing via Jean-Louis. We are hoping to hear more about what is planned relative to traffic mitigation on the River Terrace Boulevard. Right now, it appears that the majority of traffic will be entering from Shoals Ferry Road and accessing primarily via River Terrace Boulevard. The community is already experiencing speeding down the hill on that road." So that is the written question, I believe. Yes, he says, "Thank you." Though I guess Jeremy, you may, if you're still, Mr. Margot, still on the call, you could reference, I guess, typically in a case like this where there's an anticipated problem, it's, it's a, you know, it's something that can't be addressed until the, unless there's been studies that indicate there is a problem in advance. So maybe, Jeremy, you could address that. Did you hear it, you hear the question?
Yeah, Gary, I'm still here. So the applicant has submitted a traffic study, that's Exhibit G in the application materials, which also provides the trip, trip generation as well as the distribution of those trips along the various entry points to the proposed development. So within that study provided by the applicant, there were no additional traffic mitigation measures that were proposed specifically for Rivers, River Terrace Boulevard based on the anticipated impact from the proposed development. So we would be happy to share that document with the citizen if they would like a copy of the traffic study report.
Gary, is that, is that it?
Yeah, I think that's, that's right. We can follow up with that traffic report to Tim Montorosi.
Yeah, so if I remember correctly, you mentioned that there are two additional written comments or question you receive other than last President Jackson's note? So I, I believe that the planning commission typically receive a copy of written comments or questions, but I don't believe we receive those. So Tom, is that, is that okay? That, I'm sure the, the staff was, respond to them, but in this case, I don't remember seeing two additional written testimonies that Gary mentioned earlier. Do you see an issue with that?
I can clarify, they were just received shortly before the hearing by email. So typically, we wouldn't forward you an email necessarily, but we, and I, I've referred to them in the hearing. So that makes them part of the record.
Okay.
And, and forward them as a document, and can read the other two aloud if you'd like also.
Tom, do you think that's necessary, or?
So it, it depends. We, we get, you know, we send a notice out to everyone that we have an application and we're reviewing it, if you want to see the materials, where to see the applicant materials, and if you want to comment on the application. So we'll get certain number of correspondence as part of the application review. We usually write that up in that section of the staff report, and you've seen that before. And then if we get written comments coming in specifically for the planning commission hearing, and we can tell, and we know, they've identified that, we know that's the planning commission hearing, those, we will forward on to you as soon as we get them. So like tonight, I think we got some right at the last minute before the hearing, and I think Gary forwarded those. But if you want them to be read out, it's completely up to you.
Well, I'm, I'm sure the staff responded to them appropriately already, I just, just procedure-wise, because we, even the last minute once, we got a copy of them, so.
Actually, excuse me, Tom, I did not forward these emails, but I referenced them in, in the hearing, but they're brief, like the one I just wrote, read, so I'm happy to just read them into the record right now.
Yeah, if you don't mind reading the other two from Justin Sardon and Bridget or some, somebody, so?
Yeah, Bridget Montorosi, that was the one I just read.
Oh, okay.
The other two are Marie Walke Witz and Justin Sardon. Justin writes, "Hello, I wanted to address the neighborhood roads that will lead traffic into the development. Speed bumps will be needed as well as additional signage with radar readouts for your speed. The neighborhood is going to have increased traffic, and keeping pedestrians safe is a major concern. The crosswalks should also be lined across the streets with signage so they stand out. The two main roads are going to be River Terrace Boulevard and Southwest Appel Dale. Southwest Luke and Southwest 165th will also see increased traffic in connecting streets." So that's a, I referred to that earlier as increased traffic, keeping pedestrians safe is a major concern. Marie Walke Witz writes, "Attached is written testimony for the River Terrace Town Center hearing. Is it possible to also be added to a contact list for further deliberations for development in this area? I live on Bull Mountain and look forward to seeing this new community evolve, so I'd like to stay up to date on what's happening and future opportunities to share my perspectives. Any other information you have about how to stay informed would be much appreciated." And she provided a written letter regarding the wetland impacts, mitigation, stormwater management, and transportation conditions. She sounds very knowledgeable about those things. We're raising issues that typically are, are addressed and have been addressed in this application and staff report.
Okay. And how about?
I did respond directly to her about how she can stay involved, so.
Okay. And your response to Justin is, is also stated that all the traffic measure have been taken into consideration, is that your response?
Well, I didn't have time, actually, so.
So how about if I, after, after the caller, I will go back, come back to you and you can respond to Justin if you, if you want to? And I will give applicant an opportunity to, if they want to.
Okay.
Okay, so, so Eric, so can we have the caller patch through, please?
Are we ready to take a caller?
Yes, please, go ahead. Hello caller?
Hello?
Hello, welcome. Please state your name and your address.
Yeah. Evangeline Sokol, Estes and Sam. Estes and Sam, O, K as in kilo, O, L as in Lima, and I am at 16693 Southwest Burton Street. Huh?
Please go ahead.
Are you asking me? I'm trying. My name is Evangeline Sokol. I'm at 16693 Southwest.
Hello, Evangeline?
Looks like we lost that caller. If she can call back, I can put her back in, but we have another caller on the line if we want to put her in.
Sure. Hello caller, please, welcome. Hello caller?
Hello.
Hi.
Christie, Christie Sloan here. I'm, I live right above the proposed development on Southwest Florentine Avenue, specifically 13890 Southwest Florentine. Can you hear me?
Yes, hi Christie, please go ahead with your comments.
Yeah, and I, I, this isn't my first time attending a meeting like this, I, but, so still kind of airing same concern, concerned about the traffic. There's a lot of neighborhood kids that live right above the Blueberry Hill Farm, and we are in an incorporated Washington County, and I'm just wondering why we aren't including them in all of this, the planning, it's like City of Tigard, City of Tigard, oh yeah, that's Washington County, we don't, we're not, we're not going to punch through to Lorenzo, we have money allocated aside, but I'm just curious why, why there isn't talk with Washington County about that, that, the traffic flow increase significantly impacting all these, the neighborhood, you know, Beaverton, the previous caller, person on the email was saying, you know, 165th and Luke Lane, and that's Beaverton, we're in Washington, an incorporated Washington County, and I'm just wondering, with, I'd like, I could think I would like to get a copy of that traffic flow report, but I think ultimately just really concerned that the traffic is going to impact our quality of living with, with increased traffic flow, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, so before you go, commissioners, do you have any question for Christie? I see nuns. Go ahead, Commissioner Jackson.
Hi, yes, I was just curious if, if overall you would classify yourself as for, against, or neutral toward the proposal?
A hundred percent, again, big double, double thumb down.
Is, is there anything specific about it as proposed that you're against, or just you don't want that to be developed at all?
Correct, second point. We moved in here because of the, the open air look of the blue, looking down onto the Blueberry Hill Farm and openness. Enjoy the sunsets without the heavy congestion, the traffic, and the noise.
Were you under the impression that this area wouldn't be developed?
No, when we moved in, it was prior to that, or it was not disclosed. We've been here nine years.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for the caller? I see none, so thank you for your call, Christie. Up the staff and applicant will respond to your call after we, we have received all the testimony. Thank you so much for calling in. Eric, do we, do we get a caller back, the first caller?
Yes, we have one more caller. I'm gonna put her on in just a few moments.
Thank you. Gary, if you don't mind waiting until the last caller to respond.
Hello?
It's fine.
Hello, welcome caller. Please state your name and your address.
Evangeline Sokol.
Oh, hi.
Estes and Sam, O, K, O, L, I got cut off. I'm on Burton Road, 16693 Southwest Burton Street, right next to, not right next, but two houses from River Terrace Boulevard. And I'm really concerned about the increased traffic, and I'm very disappointed that it wasn't arranged properly such that there could be the second entrance off Roy Rogers through Jean Louis to get into that development. And I'm, I already, there's so much traffic, and believe me, people go way too fast, some people have very loud cars, and they go speeding around the roundabout. It's very concerning. In fact, I asked at one of our homeowners' meetings, you know, we need speed bumps or something. And I'm distressed at the extreme high density of this, because when I bought here three years ago, I thought there was going to be a sort of open shopping center across the way, across from the blueberry bushes. And I also thought there was a Trader Joe's going to go in there. I don't know if there is, or if we know what kind of grocery store, but I was sort of looking forward to having a Trader Joe's in there. what kind of grocery store, but I was sort of looking forward to having a Trader Joe's in there. Um, but when you get the extreme high density and then there's this little tiny swim center, who is the swim center for? I was under the understanding it was for River Terrace East. Um, but I don't know now. Is it for everybody in both sides of the, uh, wetlands? Or is it for the people on the east and west side of Roy Rogers Road? Um, so a lot of questions and it's very hard for me. I know, I'm from the country, so this is even harder, but, you know, four stories of buildings, I see. You know, we're not going to be able to see anything except high density, high density. And that concerns me, very much so. So that's basically what I have to say and, um, I hope you'll take that into account. Are you actually recording our phone calls?
Yes, we are.
Great. Okay, so that will be in testimony?
Yes, it definitely will.
Good.
Um, so before, yeah, so I, so I take it you are against the application, or you're neutral, or or in support?
I am against, I'm against as high a density as is proposed. And when they say eight acres of parkland, they can't really count it as eight acres because the wetlands isn't even ours. You don't go walking down there, or you shouldn't. And, um, basically right now people throw trash over the sides of that. I mean, I've seen pumpkins, Christmas trees, uh, fast food junk. Um, it's very annoying. And, um, you know, so it's like basically maybe three point eight acres or whatever that was for the green, uh, space on the other side where the blueberry field start, or ex-blueberry field starts. Um, and that's not that much for as many people that will be living in that area, plus living in both River Terraces. So I'm concerned about that.
Okay, so thank you. Before, unfortunately your time is up, but before you go commissioners, do we have any question? Do you have any question for the caller? I see none, so thank you so much for calling, Angelina. And the staff and the applicant will respond to your question and concern. All right, Eric, do we have any more callers?
I do not see any calls in the queue at this time. Um, yep.
Okay, thank you so much. So, so yeah, so Gary, um, so let's go back to your response to Justin Sarden if you want. And, and as well as the two caller, Christie and Angelina, both oppose. So if you can remember their, um, remember their questions and concern, and you want to address them, please go ahead, Gary.
So, yes, I've gotten, um, an email from Cameron Benjamin also. And the common thread here, um, is that the traffic is an existing problem in the adjoining, uh, River Terrace, um, uh, developments. Uh, Birdsong Road was mentioned, this is the north, the road, uh, adjacent to the north. And it, it's been a problem, I guess, with speeding. There's, you know, lack of, uh, light control at, at Shoals Ferry and River Terrace Boulevard. And so the, the existing problems have been, they've made the Tiger Police aware of it and the Tiger Police have responded with, you know, these, uh, your, your speed signs and move them around to try to troubleshoot the problem. So I think they're just, uh, the neighbors are registering um, some expectation that the additional traffic coming in will exacerbate an already difficult problem for them. So they're suggesting that the streets be, uh, traffic be mitigated with speed bumps or your speed signs, uh, better markings on, on the streets for pedestrian crossings and things like that. So, um, this is all background, uh, for the developer to take seriously, uh, any traffic mitigation that might be warranted. But I am, it's not my field and, uh, I don't think the code is structured to address these particular concerns. I, I do think it's an enforcement issue, uh, that's been, that the Tiger Police have been made aware of, uh, by the existing residents. That's how I would characterize the common theme that, uh, is being shared right now. Jeremy?
Gary, this is Jeremy again. Um, so for existing traffic concerns, um, crosswalks, speed bumps, those types of things that have been alluded to, there's also on the engineering webpage, um, a, a tab that you're able to click on and report on traffic safety concerns for existing conditions. Um, so that's another venue in which, um, citizens could voice those concerns. Um, I wanted to speak to the one caller who was concerned about traffic impacts to the east, um, on Lorenzo and Tuscany. Um, so specifically within the applicant's traffic report on pages sixteen and seventeen, those connections were addressed in terms of the anticipated traffic being generated by the, um, proposed development. So, um, we would be happy to share kind of the traffic report showing that trip, uh, distribution in that direction. So I just wanted to comment that that was, um, addressed in the report and that we have been collaborating with the county. The county has provided comments, you know, as the adjacent jurisdiction uh, on the traffic study as well. Um, so that's been, um, taken into account. Um, but yeah, for existing conditions such as fast and loud cars, speed bumps, those types of things, those are existing traffic concern issues and those can be addressed through the enforcement portal as well as reporting those concerns on our website.
Thank you, Jeremy, for providing that clarification and, uh, means for residents to, to pursue remedy.
Looks like we might have lost President Who. He's on mute. Oh, there he goes. So, um, I just wanted to add one clarification or addition to what Jeremy has said and then another. That is, um, he mentioned the existing traffic conditions and how to get to the website or to go to the website where we have a, you can provide information. That's for the city of Tigard. And I know this is frustrating for, uh, homeowners but in the area, but that would cover areas that are in the city of Tigard. If you're in the unincorporated portions of Washington County and you want those types of things, speed bumps, stop signs, traffic issues, you need to contact the county and they probably have that located on their website as well. So just wanted to make sure, because we have this border, that if you're in the unincorporated, you need to talk to the county about those types of traffic issues. If you're in the city of Tigard, uh, we will cover that. And then also Eric has indicated that we have another call.
Okay, so let's take another caller and we'll come back to you. All right, Eric, so please pass through the caller. Hello caller.
Hi there.
Hi, please state your name and address and whether you are in favor, in opposition, or neutral to the application. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Lauren Roll. My address is one six zero six nine Southwest Cattail Court. I'm in the Bull Mountain Meadows area and I am against this for residential purposes, but I am for it for commercial purposes. Um, as one of the other callers mentioned, I was under the impression that there would be, um, specifically a Trader Joe's shopping center in the past and that's something that I was, um, hopeful for, but I am not excited about the residential portion of this. Um, but the statement that I really wanted to make was that I am a part of the city's committee for community engagement where these type of issues get, or not issues, but, um, city plannings get brought to our attention. And I have not seen this in any of our meetings, nor was I aware of this. I actually found out about this public hearing on Nextdoor, thankfully. Um, but I was pretty disappointed that this was how I found out about this rather than, um, through either some mailing or um, the news or some other information, um, especially with my involvement on that committee.
Thank you, Lauren. Before you go commissioners, do you have any question for the caller? I see not, um, Commissioner Jackson, please go ahead for the caller.
I was just curious, I, I don't have a map handy. Um, you said you weren't, didn't receive anything via the mail. Are you within the, the notification area for this development, do you know?
Yes, I'm in Bull Mountain Meadows, which backs up to, um, this community. Like Tuscany is, that street is the neighborhood and then we're right below that.
Okay, thank you.
So I should, I think, yeah.
Um, thank you. Thank you for your call. Um, I, I will ask the staff to respond to your question. Uh, Gary, um, I guess there's a question about the notification requirement.
Yes, the land use notification is five hundred feet within the property boundary. So it's possible that, I, I, I don't know, it's possible that she, the caller was in within that and should have been notified or was notified but didn't get the notice, or is just outside?
Got it.
Excuse me.
No problem.
I have one other e-email that came in to relay to you when you're ready.
Please go ahead.
So Anya Lukianova, um, is concerned, uh, wanting to know about the development timelines. Uh, in particular about when the Lorenzo connection to Rochac would be made. And she's specifically concerned about the short cutting through Tuscany where there are a lot of children.
Do you have a, would you like to respond to that?
Well, so, um, yes, I think Jeremy alluded to it earlier, uh, that it is a complicated situation that involves coordination with the county who is currently, um, it's currently a county road and, and we, we really don't have the, uh, authority to act on it at this point. So, uh, a condition has been, has required, um, the applicant to pay an in lieu fee, you remember that discussion? But that doesn't bear on the timing of the improvement. So, um, that really can't, we don't know the answer to that question about timing of Lorenzo collection.
And Gary, just to clarify, I think the comment was related to Tuscany, is that correct?
Yes, because if you're not using Lorenzo, then the alternative routes to Rochac involve Tuscany ability, is that right?
Correct, and so both of those will be full street connections that will be constructed with this development. Um, so there will be a full street local connection, both at Tuscany and Lorenzo with this development. The fee in lieu is for the future widening of that offsite Lorenzo piece, um, that's within the county at the moment. But with this development, yes, that both of those full street connections will be made to the stub streets located to the east there.
Hey, I'm sorry to break protocol here, but I have to ask this question. When the developer and the city and the county were looking at this project, who thought that connecting through street to Lorenzo was a good idea?
Commissioner Brand, I'm sorry to interrupt you. So this is not the appropriate time to ask that question right now. After they respond to, after the staff respond to the caller, I will ask if a commissioner have any final questions. So would you please wait until I, until that time? Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
So, sorry to interrupt Jeremy and Gary. Do you have any more response to the caller and the email that you should receive so far? Or, or is that it? No, okay, thank you. At this time, um, I would like to invite the applicants. Stacy or Pam, would you like to respond to any of the public comments, either by, either by, through the phone calls or email? Would you like to respond to any of those so far? I remember there was a question asking who can use the swim center? And I think you may have addressed that. Why isn't there a second entry to Roy Rogers? Or, or anything you can think of? Please go ahead.
Okay. Well, um, just to talk about transportation to begin with and to correct a statement that I made early, earlier. Um, earlier I, I stated that at the intersection of Jean Louise and River Terrace Boulevard, that Jean Louise would have stop signs, but River Terrace Boulevard would be a through. Um, I've been corrected by our staff that that is actually a four-way stop. So there will be stop signs at that intersection on River Terrace Boulevard, which will of course help to slow traffic. Um, will slow traffic at, at that intersection, but have a, you know, kind of an effect as it carries down the street. Um, additionally, just design considerations, once, once this development is built and activated with people living and moving about this space, the presence of the buildings and the presence of the people will have an effect of slowing speeds within this neighborhood. And just to clarify some of the background that goes into preparing traffic studies when, when a development like this is proposed, is the applicant or the developer for the project hires a traffic consultant who specializes in studying the existing traffic patterns and what will happen when this project comes online and you have vehicles and people behaving as this is built out. And before they start their study, they coordinate with the local jurisdictions, in this case, both the city of Tigard and Washington County to define how big that study gets. And you'll see it defined in the traffic study that Kittleson and Associates prepared the area that they looked at, which does go outside the boundaries of the site to look at key intersections and all of that is studied as part of their report and they make recommendations as to any concerns that they see that should be mitigated. And so their, their recommendations will be incorporated into the development of this project and that included the four-way stop intersection at, um, River Terrace and Jean Louise and some improvements for Jean Louise and how access occurs at the Market Street intersection. And, let's see. The swim center in this project will be available for the multifamily residents only. And there was a third thing that you mentioned. Oh, the access to Roy Rogers. We are not able to take direct access to the town center from Roy Rogers due to, um, Roy Rogers is an arterial road with limited connections. And so the only access point to Roy Rogers that is allowed to be a full access point is in Jean Louise, which will occur as a fully, um, signalized, um, controlled intersection. So based on the classification of Roy Rogers, that's our only point of access. Except we do have an emergency access at the southern portion of the property to Roy Rogers because that multifamily mixed-use block there can only access Jean Louise with a full intersection. So we do have the secondary emergency access. And that's all I had. I don't know if you wanted to add anything, Pam?
Uh, I didn't really have anything to add. I think maybe to clarify a little bit more on the occupancy limits of the swim center that's proposed for the development. Um, many of the other River Terrace neighborhoods do include a swim center. And, um, they, I think there is one swim center that accommodates more than one, um, development. Uh, but at this time, based on the number of, uh, developable units within the, the, um, project, uh, the swim center is just deemed, uh, to be used by the apartment community itself. That's all I had. That's all I had.
Thank you. Eric, do we have more caller?
Yeah, we have one more caller. Do you want me to put him in?
Yes, please. Hello caller.
Brian Hutch, my name is Brian Hutchison. I'm at 16528 Southwest Birdsong. And I would just like to say, this is much better news than when we first moved here a couple of years ago. There was, we had heard, you know, there being a those or something like that. And so I do like the commercial aspect of it, but I did want to speak up for the people at Lorenzo and Tuscany. I'm not sure why those streets have to be continued into that development. And for the sake of those people in that, in that development, I'd like to see those roads closed off, be left closed off. So that's my only comment.
Thank you. So Brian, so, so are you in support or in opposition or neutral to the application?
I don't like the high residential aspect of it, but I am, I am in support. I'm not so naive or, you know, I did realize that they were going to develop that land. There was no doubt when we moved here. So I can't be against that. I'm a little, I'm a little disappointed at the high residential area, but I am happy about the commercial use because it's a lot less than what we expected to be back there. So I guess overall I am in favor of it, but I'm not in favor of those roads going through to the Rochac area.
Got it. Commissioners, do you have any questions from Brian before he leaves? I see none. So thank you, Brian, for calling in. We appreciate your input. Gary or Jeremy, you want to respond to the the connection through Jean Louise and?
Sure, I could respond to that. So Tuscany and Lorenzo there are existing stub streets. And so the, the presence of a stub street on a property boundary per code is required to be extended at the time of development by the adjacent property. So the existence of these two stubs means that it's always been intended for the connection to be made at which time this property was developed. So that's per code requirement and to meet the city's goals in terms of connectivity for all users, right? Vehicles, pets, bikes, providing connectivity between the communities.
Thank you, Jeremy. Stacy, would you like to add anything or is that good enough for you?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So commissioners, Commissioner Brent, I understand you have a question for the staff or applicant. Please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Full disclosure, I know Christie Sloan and I, and I know this neighborhood and Lorenzo. And I know about the large amount of children that live in that particular bend right there. And, and so this little Milan, Lorenzo, Tuscany, Rochac. So the criticism here is, I understand the sub-street has to be connected through, but this, this sub-street on Lorenzo doesn't go anywhere. It's a loopback street and then it comes back to Palermo or goes down to Milan or Tuscany. So that means that anybody that's going to be using this road in, to get in and out of this development, is going to be doing a particular amount of driving within a very highly established residential neighborhood with lots of children and walking, people walking and jogging, potentially causing a lot of conflict and ruffled feathers. So one potential idea would be to look at is
Do you have, I'm sorry, Commissioner Brent, do you have a question?
Yes, why can't we make that Lorenzo connection a one way where only people leaving the Rochac neighborhood can go through it and to discourage people coming from the inside like they have done over at Summer Lake Park on 135th?
Tom, would you like to answer that or Jeremy?
Well, I was going to answer his question generally. Not, well, that I could get to that specifically. Keeping in mind, I'm not a transportation planner or a transportation or traffic engineer, but I can tell you the history. Since the very beginning of River Terrace with the expansion of the urban growth boundary and the very early planning, the county did the concept plan, the city of Tigard did the community plan. That connection has always been there through all the planning, that intended connection. And the county, this was actually something that was brought up by the county transportation folks, and I believe it might even be in their TSP. I could be wrong on that, but this is something that they wanted to connect Rochac Road through this area and it requires some, there's a portion of property that separates the two. That's a common open space, I believe, for that development. So there has to be some right-of-way dedication or a right-of-way purchase. And it's all in the county. So the county, it has to be a county project and the county has to lead on that. And as this, this particular development project came through, we did contact the county and have had conversations with them. But it doesn't seem to be on their immediate radar to move forward with this. We basically pointed out to the county that as this project is approved and starts to be constructed, that that's going to leave people with some pretty out of route options to get in and out of there. But knowing the long-term plan and in the county's plan is to have Rochac directly connected to Jean Louis. Jean Louise, I can't, if that's how they say it. Then, then that was always the intent of the county was to connect Jean Louise to Rochac. And again, I think that's in their TSP, but unfortunately, it's, it's the timing issue with the county. They are not in a position to make that connection right now.
I think Commissioner Brent was asking about whether we can make one of those, connect that, that street that will be connected through into a one-way street. Is that right, Commissioner Brent? Is that what?
Well, that, again, that would, that would have to get approval through the county, I would assume. That is not their intention. That is not their plan. Their plan is for a collector's street, two-way collector's street that connects directly to Rochac through there.
Got it. So that's
Add to that.
In other words, above a pay grade.
Yeah, Tom covered it well. I mean, in terms of any changes in terms of the existing traffic flow on Lorenzo as it stands right now would have to be through the county. It's currently designed as a local street, which is sufficient for two-way traffic. So I couldn't comment on if the county would desire to make that into a one-way in that existing location.
Thank you. Commissioner Shook, you have a question?
I do. A couple of callers brought up the, that it was their idea, thought that there would be a Trader Joe's in this area. And I think maybe one of the commissioners was thinking about a grocery store. And I was just wondering, knowing how thorough the planning is for these things, was that something that was presented at one point? That there would be a grocery store or Trader Joe's or is that something that's been changed or how, or do we not know how those people got that idea?
Yeah, I have, I have similar question because there's current code, it's community commercial, right? So my reading of the code is that it, community commercial doesn't allow a grocery store like Trader Joe's. But I could be wrong. So could either Gary or Tom answer this question?
Well, it would go by the type, which is retail. Groceries, it would be, wouldn't, I believe it would be allowed. I don't think there's a square footage limitation on that. But as far as where, you know, I don't know where these types of rumors get started. This, this property hasn't even been in the hands of a developer or, you know, an entity that was going to develop it for, until just very recently. Lots of rumors get started about what might go where and what people are doing. There's no, so, you know, whether, that someone heard that there might be a Trader Joe's there, it doesn't surprise me, but you know, again, until this particular developer came forward with this project a couple of months ago, nothing was, is for sure. And we don't, as a city, we don't regulate, you know, we don't say, the regulations say a Trader Joe's has to be here. That's, we don't get involved at all to that level. So I don't know that there's any prohibition on something. I don't know what the size of a Trader Joe's known as.
Okay, fair enough. So I guess we have another caller?
Yeah, I guess that's up to you, President Hu, as to whether we've closed the public hearing portion of the
I think, yeah, it's getting late, but let's get one more caller and that's it. Eric, please let the caller call through.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you for calling. Please say your name and your address, please.
I'm Anya Lukianova. I'm at 16450 Southwest Tuscany, right on the corner. You would guess that I'm calling about our favorite subject. I think a lot has been said about how to mitigate the impact. I think I would like to say it out loud that the traffic study that's cited in the documents appears to be very short-sighted. Its size increases modeled based on the number of residences in the new development. It ignores completely what's happening in the neighborhood today. Tuscany at the corner where it's proposed to open is a downward street both ways. Already today, we have cars cutting through the neighborhood that are making their way out of this big residential area toward Bull Mountain and Roy Rogers and backwards. So today it's used as a commuter street and in the mornings, we, I mean, the speeds that we see, especially if you open Tuscany further and at a grade that actually the applicant specifies, we have 15 to 20 kids and today we've had really tough calls with speeding drivers. And I think that the study is very short-sighted in terms of the patterns already existing in the neighborhood, forgetting for a moment the additional traffic that the new residences will bring. And I think, I actually think that for those of us on Tuscany, the opening of Lorenzo to Rochac serves some of the problems. But I also agree with an assessment made by Gary earlier that we just have a traffic problem that this can exacerbate. And I'd love the opinion, not of just of the city of Tiger Police, but of the Washington County about how to mitigate that. Right now on Barrows, there are two census downs following some really traumatic accidents just over the last week. So traffic being one, and maybe I have a question around the timelines. I think Gary asked my question earlier on email, but I'm not sure I heard the exact answer of when the construction is proposed to start and when the phases of the construction are expected to finish. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before you go, commissioners, do you have any question for the caller? Well, I guess, I gather you are in opposition to the application?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Are you in opposition to the application? Are you in favor or, okay. Commissioners?
In general, yes, if it's mitigated for the rest of us.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the caller? I see none. So thank you so much for calling. Gary or Jeremy, I think you respond to this concern question already, but if you want to respond again, please go ahead.
Well, I think the applicant would be able to answer Anna's, Anya's question about a development timeline. When do they expect to develop?
I can answer that. So we expect the development to begin in the summer months of this year. And then vertical construction to begin early next year. It could be as early as January of 2023.
Okay, so that's good. Commissioners, any last questions, last for applicants or staff before we go into deliberation again? I see none. So thank you, Gary, Jeremy and Stacy and Pam. I will close the public hearing again. So that's going to deliberation. So I believe Commissioner Miranda, do you have any comments? Do you like it or what do you like about it? What you don't like about it? Would you approve? Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, it's okay. I was rage eating. The application meets the criteria that is set forth by the city. I, I struggle a little bit with kind of this last minute crush of participation. And it, it concerns me that the neighborhood surrounding was not made aware adequately in a reasonable amount of time. But that could be from quite a few different reasonings. I, I think it's really hard to explain the behavior of the county and the city and this very important gray area we're having specifically around this traffic situation. And I have a lot of empathy for these residents and people, but I don't feel, feel that that's something that we can address or the applicant can truly address in this situation. I am for both, both amendments as they are proposed.
Thank you. Commissioner Shook, I haven't heard from you much today.
I've been sitting here taking it all in. It's it's actually rather remarkable that on a project that's this size, that there isn't more participation from the community. I think we've done a couple 12-lot or 20-lot things that seemed to, the last one we did went till 10:30. So this is a huge project and I guess it speaks to the, the applicant and city planning. As, as the applicant or as Gary was reviewing the project, I was thinking of all the different sessions that we've sat through with Skylar and talking about the, how they want to see or the city's vision for this area and for River Terrace too. And then this project is put before us and it looks like what they've talked about. So that's why it was surprising to me that you would even think there'd be a grocery store down there because everything that I've seen looks like what we're looking at today. And the, the way that the project transitions from residential to to a little more dense and then townhomes and then right by the main road, the apartment complexes and the way they've contemplated all the trails and everything. It's difficult to have density and it's difficult when we have a, have to bring more housing in and I just think it's very well done. I think the city's done a really good job of enforcing their standards. And the applicant's kind of done a good job of complying. So development's tough for neighbors, especially on stub streets where it's been very quiet. And then to all of a sudden jump to, yeah, thoroughfare and some people are going to speed. It's not, but that's not something the applicant has to deal with. So I support it and I appreciate the conversation tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Kinones, if you don't mind?
I'm excited for it. I think that their, their asks of requests are reasonable. And I think that once this is done, they will see the benefit and, and and move through the growing pains that is being posed right now. But yeah, I, I'm really excited for it and I think that this is really going to activate the community over there. And I think that this is really going to activate the community over there in River Terrace. So I am for it and yeah, I'm excited for it.
Thank you for your input. Let's see, Commissioner Watson.
Hi. My views have been very well summarized by the previous commissioners. And yeah, I sympathize with traffic issues and the fact that there's the overlap between Washington County and the city of Tiger here. And yes, the applicant does not have control over Washington County and how they are designing their traffic. I think it's a very thorough and well thought out project by the applicant. And yeah, with the issues that we're dealing with in regards to housing demands and balancing that with maintaining the wetlands and providing parks and all of that. It's a good looking project and that's what it needs to do, so I am for it.
Thank you. Commissioner K. Seven, your thoughts?
Hi. Yeah, I think pretty much most of the commissioners have already expressed my views and concerns too. I walked in after reading all the materials saying, hey, this is really cool. I'm so glad we're doing it kind of thing now after listening to some of the residents. I'm a little concerned about the traffic, et cetera, right? Hopefully we can add, you know, speed bumps or even as Commissioner Bryant was suggesting, the reader boards that kind of reflect the speed that we are driving at, kind of like they've done on Rochac actually. Hopefully that helps. And like Commissioner Kinones was saying, hopefully these growing pains will not last too long and things will settle down and people will behave, hopefully, right? And hopefully we can evolve and adapt and fix it up. But I think it'll be nice to have such a vibrant community in the area and hopefully it'll help kind of grow Tiger even better as we go forward. And as technology improves, I'm also hopeful we will have other kinds of sensors and cameras that can help mitigate some of the traffic infractions and things like that. So I'm all for it, but I'm extremely empathetic to the residents and I fundamentally hear their pain. I could feel their pain in their voices, so I really appreciate that. But we need the housing for the growth that we are anticipating, so I'm for it.
Thank you. Commissioner Brad?
Thank you. Yes, as a whole, this is a very impressive project. The mixed use and with the commercial and the full-size houses and then scaling down to the apartments is brilliant. This is something that is absolutely needed in the area. And if this is executed well, this may be a model for the rest of the metro area to mimic. You have to get people a reason to stay in their neighborhood and not drive everywhere. So in terms of the applicant, kudos, good job. The design and build is very encouraging with the mixed-use path, the cross east-west connection. I love it. Unfortunately, the downside is the somewhat wonky connection to the rest of the neighborhood because that neighborhood was never designed to be a through neighborhood as a loop and lollipop. So that's outside of our purview, so that is one thing. But when it comes to, my only criticisms I have of the actual project is the lack of lead certification type aspirations like solar panels, groundwater mitigation for gray water, for irrigation of the project and stuff like that. And some of these other technologies that we're trying to bring to the community to help reduce our impact on the environment. I understand that increases price point, but I have a feeling these are going to be quite expensive and normal people aren't going to be living here. So overall, I'm in support of the project and I really want to tell the design team, great job. And I also like to say to the city folks, very good, very good job in working with the contractor to approve this. So it is my vote.
Thank you. Last person, Jackson.
Yeah, I'll try to briefly echo a few things that I've heard that I agree with. I also very much feel for the people with concerns about traffic. I would strongly encourage people with those concerns to continue to push for those mitigation and other enforcement efforts that they think are necessary with police or the relevant engineering departments. I would also encourage you to get organized because it sounds like there's a number of you out there with similar concerns. And if you get organized, that helps your cause. I also feel for the people that had different expectations for what this area or how this area would develop. I'm a little, to echo specifically Commissioner Shook, I'm a little confused, I guess, as to why anyone thought that because for as long as I've been aware of River Terrace as a concept, this was always what I thought it was going to be. I think that this particular town center section is fairly well thought out. My concerns about it tend more toward, I would have liked to see more multi-use and more like public meeting space that has interior spaces. I trust that the studies that they did showed the conclusions that they said they showed. But just from a broad standpoint, I would have loved to see even more multi-use. But overall, I think it's a good trade off between the flexibility they're requesting and the benefits they're providing.
Thank you. And quickly for me, I echoed most, if not all, of what you just said and I'm in support of the project. And I especially appreciate the gradual transition or increasing density from the existing neighborhood to the east and increasing density to the busy street to the west by Roy Roger. I think that's a good, good design. So it's a gradual increase of density. And one comment of the caller saying that the wild, the open space, the wild space is not enough. But my understanding is that the city will be taking over jurisdiction of larger wetland. And so I would think they would develop into a park, which is not there right now. So I think that will actually be a positive improvement to the community. So I think that's all the comment I have and I'm in support of the project. So commissioners, Gary has asked us for two motions. One is approval of the concept plan and the other one is the approval of the detailed plan with the approving condition along with the subdivision, sensitive land review and temporary use permit. And I will, I'm entertaining a motion if any one of you would like to make one. The first one should be easy.
Well, so when we look at concept and detail, do they both have the same code of PDR 2021-00004?
I think the first.
Okay.
So. Solidated plan, right?
Okay, so the easiest way to solve this is to start with a motion and see how it falls. So I'd like to move that we approve the concept plan, PDR 2021-00004, and with the findings and conditions of approval contained in the staff report and based on the testimony received.
There's no condition approval, but I understand what you meant.
They have the responses and.
Yeah, yeah. So Commissioner Robert has moved for the approval of application PDR 2021-4 for the concept plan and adoption of the findings containing the staff report based on testimony received. Do I have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Watson, thank you, second. Any questions or discussion before we vote? All right, so Commissioner, if you're in favor of the motion, please locate the raise hand button and push it and stay, stay raised, stay, stay raised. All right, so those in favor say aye.
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 So, oh seven, commissioner member raised their hand, so it passes unanimously to nine to zero. Thank you. All right, please low your, please lower your hand. Commissioner Robert, would you like to make the second motion as well?
Okay, so I move for approval of the applications, the detailed plan, plan development review, PDR 2021-0004, the subdivision code SUB 2021-00006, the sensitive lands review, SLR 2021-00011, and the temporary use permit to UP 2021-00021-23, and adoption of the findings contained in the staff report and based on the testimony received.
All right, so Commissioner Robert has moved for the approval of the detailed plan in application PDR 2021-4, SUB 2021-6, SLR 2021-11, TUP 2021-21-23, and adoption of the findings and the conditions of approval contained in the staff report based on the testimony received. Tom?
I'm sorry, can I make a clarification?
Yeah.
Just wanted to clarify that Commissioner Roberts in his motion was referring to the amended staff report that was.
Yes, thank you.
Email.
The one that came through this afternoon, yes.
Yes. So.
Do I need to restate anything?
I think, I think it's clear, I can restate it again. So Commissioner Robert has moved for approval of detailed plan, the application PDR 2021-4, SUB 2021-6, SLR 2021-11, TUP 2021-21-23, and adoption of the finding and condition approval contained in the revised staff report based on the testimony received. Do I have a second? Commissioner Watson, second, thank you very much. Commissioners, please take a moment to locate the raise hand button and push it if you are in support of the motion. All right. Those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. So all nine commissioner member approved, so it passes nine to zero unanimously. Thank you so much. So the application is approved. And I have a request statement. If you wish to appeal, please contact the planning division for an explanation of appeal requirement. Thank you. All right, other business, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, Tom?
Yeah, good evening. I don't really have much in the way of other business tonight. I did want to mention to the commissioners, we did on Friday, received resignation from alternate Commissioner Dick. She had indicated on Friday in a letter to the mayor that she wished to resign from the commission. So just wanted to let everyone know that and be aware of that. With the move of Commissioner Miranda from alternate to a voting member, at the moment, we do not have any alternate commissioners. So that's not necessarily a problem. And we're, we can talk about, we'll talk internally whether we want to look at some of those that we had interviewed for some of the open positions or if we want to wait till the next recruitment to fill the alternate positions. But I just wanted to let everyone know. And other than that, we are finally starting to get through our busy period. And just remind you that we have a couple of legislative briefings. We have a couple more quasi judicial cases and we have our joint meeting with the city council coming up that will be, again, a work session based on several specific questions that we'll put to you. And do we have any questions? I don't have anything else at this point.
I've got a tangential question. We've heard a lot about traffic. And I mean, I get it too, my street is used as a cut through and people speed. So, and I realize we don't, what's the right venue? I know we meet with city council in about a month, month and a week, something like that. But is there a way to just to communicate to them that this is something we're observing as a continuous and increasingly pressing issue? Just, and that's, I mean, that's just basic behavioral. We can't put a cop on every corner because we can't afford that, right? So that would do a trick. And telling them how fast they're going doesn't seem to matter because there's no sting appropriate that accompanies that. So I don't know what the right channel is to, and I realize there's a budget issue, right?
Yeah, a couple of things. Number one, it's really hard to influence other people's behavior. And unfortunately, at this point in time, there seems to be, I think it's generally a small percentage of those that do those kinds of things. And surprisingly, people who wouldn't speed in their own neighborhood and complain about that can often find themselves doing that in other people's neighborhoods. And so sometimes people do it and they're not even really aware of it. But it's really hard to influence people's behavior and it tends to be a pretty small portion. But it all, even if it's a very small portion, one percent, that still ends up being a lot of people. So I think council was very well, very much aware of it. We've been, the city's been doing surveys, citizen surveys for a long time. And traffic and transportation issues are constantly, you know, that's always the number one issue, constantly. It's like thirty-five percent. And then everything else is like ten percent, eight percent, seven percent. So it is absolutely in the council's awareness. The problem is, and I don't know, well, the problem is there's only so much we can do about it. We're pretty limited. And a lot of it is perception. If you're living on a street with one or two cars and then there's suddenly there's an uptick in cars, the streets are constructed for that, it meets the, you know, the specifications of the street, you know, but maybe it doesn't meet the expectations of the person living there. There's a lot of things that go into it, so many things that go into it. And there's only so much we can do, like you said, about getting patrols out, putting up signs, putting up radar, things that tell you how fast you're going. You'll see neighborhoods do slow down kind of signs, get together and do things like that. I don't know, the jury's sort of out on whether speed bumps, speed humps are effective or not. Some oftentimes people slow down for the hump and then just floor it to get to the next hump. And it's just so hard, it's just so hard to affect people's behavior.
True.
There's, you know, to add on to that, there's also the jurisdictional intersections of, you know, state highway versus county versus city and all of that. And I think, and you know, when I participated in like the transportation CACs and that sort of thing, there's sort of like a, like Tom was saying, there's a perception issue. And then, you know, that it's sort of like. And then, you know, that it's sort of like, I don't know if if there's a way for for the city to work with Washington County or for there to be, you know, like for it to be more clear for people to know where to go when they have issues about people running stop signs or what have you. You know, like feeling like, you know, coming to a city of Tiger Planning Commission, you know, it's like a meeting to talk about a Washington County intersection. You know, there's there's some frustration that's occurring because it's not readily apparent to most people, you know, who who owns what or, you know, who's responsible for what.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah. Yeah, I saw the bus for a red light at McDonald and ninety-nine. So we got a state highway, a Tiger Street and a Metro Bus, right? Wow.
Yeah, that's a tough one. It's always difficult for people. The post office, the US post office doesn't help because they base their zip codes on something totally different than.
Yes.
City boundaries, so people have, the post office says you're in the city of Tiger when you're not in the city of Tiger.
In the city of Portland.
You go to the city Tiger Post Office or you go to a city of Portland Post Office or a Beaverton Post Office. And then we've got school district boundaries. The Tiger Twalton boundary, you know, doesn't go all the way up to Shoals Ferry. So a portion of that area on the north side of River Terrace is Beaverton School District. So it's, believe me, we run into this every day. We get people calling, you know, with questions into the permit counter. They want to know what's happening, what they can do on their property. And we have to send them off to the county because they're in an unincorporated area. You know, I could, I could bore you for the rest of the evening going on about my personal opinion about counties shouldn't be allowing urban density out in unincorporated areas. But, you know, that that horse is long out of the barn many, many, many years ago. And different people are in charge, different standards happen. So we get different sets of roadways that connect, you know, Bull Mountain was done a long time ago. And I I don't know who did it, but I don't think the street system up there was particularly well put together. That Rochac Road with that elbow bend there, you know, there's a cul-de-sac immediately to the east of it. There's the little blockage to Lorenzo on the west side. The whole thing should have been a four-way intersection, you know, it should have, that's what connectivity is all about. That would have relieved a lot of pressure. But when they built it, it didn't happen. And so we're stuck with trying to get around it and deal with it. So hopefully, we can get the county moving and, you know, try to solve some as many issues there as we can. But there's so many things that go into it and so many things that are already have been created by folks in the past and we're trying to mitigate for.
Kill the legacy, yeah. Well, if the venues are in place for city to count, to talk to the county and vice versa. And, you know, for, at least there's, if there's a mechanism for the communication, then just light potentially at the end of the call. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll see.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing I can tell you, and this is a nice segue into a future project that's coming your way, is I always tell people, there's really, ultimately, there's no solution to traffic. You know, you build, you build a four-lane highway, people find out about it. They all jump on that four-lane highway until it's jammed.
Yep.
You put four more lanes on it to make an eight-lane highway and it just draws that many. You can't build roads wide enough to handle all the traffic that will want to use it. So the other, you know, the best thing to do is to have situation where there's more places for people to get to without having to jump in their car. I mean, it's fine if people jump in their car, but if people have other options, they may take those other options to be able to walk and bike to things that they can get closer at hand. And again, seventy-style suburban eliminated all of that. And now we're in a position where we're looking to kind of retrofit. You even heard some of the commentary tonight. Some of the folks in Bull Mountain didn't necessarily like the density of homes going in, but boy, they love the opportunity to have those commercial areas just a few blocks away.
Yes.
And so we're, when the Tiger Made Project is complete, which is essentially a modernization, you've heard of briefings, essentially a modernization of our commercial employment industrial zones. We're going to start a new project that we're essentially going to modernize our residential zones. And one of the things we'll be looking at, and we'll need help from you, is to look for ways that we can start to get some destination-type services closer to the where people live, which means allowing some things into some of these residential neighborhoods. Obviously, that's going to be very tricky. And I think it only works if we get the neighbors, the majority of the neighbors in those neighborhoods excited about having that happen.
Yeah.
So that'll be a very interesting project and that'll probably, it's going to take a lot, a lot, a lot of public involvement. And so we're gearing up for that. And we're hoping to start that in the fall.
Cool. Cool. Wow, thank you. And thirty years from now, maybe our cars will all be autonomous and programmed to follow the rules.
In seventy years from now, maybe we'll all have transporters and we won't need to worry about cars.
That'll be great.
Nathan, you're, Commissioner, sorry, you had your hand up and I think Commissioner Miranda had her, has her hand up as well.
So yeah, I had a question, I guess it would be a process question. So at least my perception was tonight, it seemed like a number of people were possibly watching the hearing, but then writing emails during the hearing. And then we addressed those as public comments. I don't know that we'd ever encountered that before and I wasn't sure what the standard was for that. Is there a cutoff as far as receiving written comments? We also had a situation where I think one person wrote an email during the hearing and then also called in. And normally, if it was an in-person hearing, we wouldn't let a person come up multiple times. So I wasn't sure how that should be handled.
Yeah, well, this was a little unusual situation. I think Mr. Pegg and Stecker had had some email conversation going on with one of the, I think he was trying to respond to their question and then got another question. So that's a little unusual, that doesn't usually happen. We don't usually have people emailing during hearing. We, there is a cutoff, I think it's, I believe it might be six o'clock or five o'clock, maybe even four o'clock, it's four, five or six day of hearing. That's what we put in in writing in the notices. That's the deadline for written comments. A lot of times, people don't necessarily sort of like speeding, they don't, you know, follow rules.
I I want people to participate however they are, you know, is most accommodating for them, but within.
So it tends to come down to the commission and the president and vice president about how much, how accommodating you want to be. You know, you've been in meetings where we've been in person and we've had a room full of people. And so it's really important to keep it under control and keep it orderly. And sometimes when there's one or two people, the president has let them come back up again if certain questions come up. So it's kind of reading the situation and and things got a little weird tonight. But I think, you know, we got everybody's question answered. We heard everybody that wanted to be heard, so that's the most important part.
And I assume when we switch to the having them conference in instead of call in, that might might help too?
Uh, yes.
That's efficient.
Definitely, the calling thing is really difficult.
Um, uh, thank you, Nathan. I just wanted to, I doubt that any other of the callers are online watching us at this time. But I thought that, you know, that we have electeds who we can reach out to, you know, specifically who sit, who come to our board meetings or who are working with transportation or liaison to Washington County and that that reaching out to your electeds is is a great place to have your voice be heard. And I thank you, Nathan, for stating what I was not so eloquently trying to say about how it was a little unusual to have so much last-minute feedback. And it 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 was interesting, but I appreciate it. And I appreciate President Hu's firm hand most of the time, so you're doing a great job. Thank you.
I don't want to be the no, no soup for you guys.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, everybody. Have a good night, meeting adjourned. Bye.
Bye, everybody, good night.
Night.
Thanks, Eric. We'll see you.